All right, we are going to go ahead and I have our local fees.
Mr. Antoine is here, Ms. Bondic.
Here.
Ms. Bowman?
Yeah.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Jake Trocky?
Here.
Sorry. Ms. Eichord?
Here.
And Ms. Rice is under the bench.
All right, let's rise to the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
As to approve tonight's agenda, I just want to read a couple amendments that I know to the amendment. So can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Still moved?
Support.
Removed by Bonnick, this is her question. So the amendments, we are going to, the amendment is to, for item B, Employee Services Resolution 60A, which is policy 6002, we just want to table that discussion for right now until we can get some more legal advice and hear the policy committee again until we get to that. We are adding Resolution 67, which is on the back, and we have a separate sheet for that. And then just kind of a housekeeping item amend to move item O, close session after our mass public comment. Any questions? All right, all in favor of that amended agenda?
Aye.
opposed? All right, that passes. So we are going to move on to our first presentation of the night, which I know is kind of a June activity. Thank you, Mrs. Lasky.
So this presentation. So this presentation is to provide the Board of Education and the public the information on our military rates, our debt levy for the 2025 summer collection, and how it relates to our budget. First, we're going to talk about the debt fund. We have $2.9 billion in taxable values for all properties within the district. We need 3.85 mils levy to pay for our debt. We have an estimated fund balance ending this year of 2.0, almost $2.9 million. Changes in our expenditures at the end of the year, we look at all of our budget items and see where we, budgets have some money left in their line, and we gather all that to put towards fund balance. We had an additional transfer to Community Service Fund, we'll talk about that in just a minute. Employee stipends, any severances for employees that are leaving, and class size overages, we pay those out. Our VA tuition, we look at that to see how much we have left there and legal fees. In addition, in our operations and maintenance function, we have some vacancies that were not filled, so we put that towards fund balance until next year. Miscellaneous supplies, we have the utilities that are all in our operations and maintenance budget, so that's, we try to predict what we will end the year with. We've had some additions to buildings, so we're kind of seeing whether our electricity and the gas usage is appropriate for what we've got budgeted. Also in transportation, we had vehicle repair parts, there was money left in there, and fuel and oil. And we usually do have money left over in these funds, we try to budget generously for those. I just want to touch on this really quickly because this is the last time I think we're going to talk about this ever. The SIR funding, we had a little bit left, $55,000 in the SIR 3 formula left to spend in '24-'25, so we are done, it was expended by September 30th. And then SIR 311T, which was for a specialized population of our students, we got $228,012 to spend, so we also fully expended that on September 30th of this year. I just want to let you know that we're currently being audited by MDE for our SIR expenditures, so I'll let you know the results of those, that audit, when it's done. It's been going on for a couple months now. There we go. So this, at the end of this year, we're expecting that we'll have revenues to exceed our expenses by $1,049,088, and we expect our fund equity to be $18,087,017 or 23.63% at the end of '24-'25. So I know this is small, but if you look, the green column is where I want to focus. We have to adopt budgets, year-end budgets and original budgets for four other funds, and this is our Community Service and Child Development Fund, so this is the preschool and childcare, SAC, GSRP goes through this fund. This is the one where, in the last column there, he had talked about how we needed to supplement the Community Service Fund. We talked about it in our amendment about $250,000. We needed more than that, and you'll see in that third, fourth line, $664,000 that we need to move to the Community Service Fund. We can't adopt any budgets that are in deficit, so it's important that the General Fund supplement this fund temporarily. Myself, Ms. McFarland, Ms. Beck, and Ms. Mac Betty, we're all going to work this through the, of the next year, I'm monthly meet on this, and work towards improving that budget and finding, figuring out what we can do to make that more sustainable on its own. Okay? So that's going to end the year with about a fund balance of $27,768. We also have to put an adopted budget for the bookstore, that's just, that's run by the students, it's the, you know, with the merchandise that they sell and the things that they purchase to create their merchandise, it flows through this account. We expect them to end with the fund balance of above $59,000. They, they're a sustainable program, self-sustaining program. And then our food service, in the green column there, again, we've, with the universally free breakfast and lunch, that, that fund has been accumulating fund balances, and we've recited last year, just through our audit, that we needed to come up with an expense plan, excess fund balance spending plan. So we have spent some, we bought a truck this year. We have some other things where we know we're going to need to do, and if this continues in the same direction, we're going to have to spend some other, come up with some, a new plan and submit that to the state. It's a little bit difficult to do because we bought a lot of equipment, but we know we have a, some cafeterias that are going to be remodeled a little bit in the future, so hopefully we can use some of these funds for that. And then the last one is the student activity count. This is the fund, this is where students raise funds and then the students use those funds for activities that they do, and that's, that's very self-sustaining. That blended the year with almost $1.3 million of fund balance, even though they've used some fund balance this year. So our budget assumptions for '25-'26, we have a blended count of 5,324 students as of April of 2025. Our plant ran real point enrollment projection with some modifications that we've made from knowledge that about our enrollment, our own enrollment is 5,357 FTEs, so we're projecting a 33 FTE increase for next year. So the legislative proposals that we fill in our other part of our budget, or the, is one of the other unknowns about our budget, is the governor's budget was proposed, a $392 per pupil increase, or 4.1% to $10,000 per pupil, and right now we're at 96.08, remember that. State Senate's budget is $400 per pupil, or 4.6% increase, $10,008. And then the House budget is $417 per pupil, or 4.3% increase, or $10,025 per pupil. The House budget is very unique, and it's used one billion dollars in one-time funding to give additional funding over and above the foundation allowance, so even though it says $10,025, they're, they're projecting that they will give additional funds to districts. We're uncertain, is this a sustainable budget for that after this year, and the budget process will continue through Lansing, and they have to adopt their budget by September 30th. So I'm not sure, Dr. Robinson may have, you know, you know, more of a sight on where, when he thinks that budget will be adopted, but it has to be done by September 30th. So we are going to use the governor's budget for our projections, $392 per pupil increase, or $10,000, I guess, our foundation allowance. If you remember, we briefly talked about this at the workshop, that the 147A4, which is our NIPs' cost offset, is of what's concerned in the, of concern to us in the governor's budget. In '24-'25, which is this past, this school year that we're just finishing up, we received almost $2 million to offset the, what was equal to 5.75% increase in retirement rate. In '25-'26, there is that 1.0, or almost $2 million is not in the budget for us to receive. However, the pension rates did not reduce themselves to 5, by 5.75%, it's more of a 2 to 3%. So our estimated increased retirement costs are $1.1 million, or $388 per pupil. So as you see, between $388 and $392, that doesn't give us a whole lot of extra money for the next year. As we have done in many years, we've gone through the district leadership priorities process, and we are maintaining our five LMM treatment interventionists who were funded through a grant this past year, and will be funded through the General Fund. One will be funded through a grant, and the rest will be through General Fund next year. Equitable and sustainable contracts, those are contracts that we negotiated just recently, or are still in negotiations. Our CKLA version three, an RVA coordinator, our new math curriculum, we've added additional funding to the cycle of independence and capturing kids' hearts program. Those were priorities for district leadership. So if we look at just a portion of the spreadsheet that we've used to come up with our budget numbers, we, you can see we've used our assumption of 53-24 from the April 2025 state aid status report, our state aid increase of $392, that would give us an additional, almost $2.1 million in additional revenue. The state aid per pupil, we've projected to be $10,000 with the governor's proposal, and enrollment to be 5,357 FTEs, an increase of 33. And that would give us an additional $330,000 for a total state aid increase of $2.4 million. Some other things that aren't necessarily revenue, but they add to the bottom, they add a positive to our bottom line, is staffing turnover. When we, when people retire, we usually hire at a lower, a newer and lower cost employee. Our 147G NIPs, there are 3% cost offset, there's an additional $323,000 that we're beginning this year. And then we'll talk about this in just a few slides, but our, our fund balance spend down will be $2.8 million for next year. We're also transferring, projecting to transfer food service, $125,000, and that would be total to appropriate of almost 6 million, $5.9 million. So some of the expenditures that are increased, or our legacy costs that we have, are the contracts that we have with our, with our collective bargaining groups that we've already bargained, and those needed to be added to the budget. And retirement costs that I spoke about a few slides back with the 147A4 of $1.1 million. Enrollment positions, we have 3.67 FTE in enrollment positions that we needed to add. I think most of those are the high schools, except for high school and middle school. High school and middle school, $358,778. And then next year, I'm projecting a transfer, just to be safe, to the Community Service Fund of $500,000. Service contract added costs, those are things like our insurance, our custodial contracts, our lawn mowing contracts, things that we already have signed on the dotted line, and those are extra costs. And then former grant transfers, these are the math interventionists that I talked about, and then former grants to General Fund for the safety expenditures. We, the 31AA, our safety costs for, for some of our contracts will exceed what we're being allocated in the 31AA, so there's just a little bit, so $85,000. So our total spend, we're sorry.
Before you go too far, I just, before this, you get stamp reductions on there, but no money next to it? Was that just?
Because we didn't, it's not like we.
We didn't eliminate any.
We didn't eliminate any positions.
Okay. I was, I was, thank you.
These are the, these are the three groups of leadership priorities that we have discussed. We'll go into those in further detail. I think Dr. Robinson's got that in his report. So this is just a breakdown of our revenues. Our local revenues, the 18 mils generates $10.4 million. Local revenues, other, that would be like, gate receipts, those types of things, $1.6 million. The state aid foundation is $43 million, and state aid other, that would be categorical grants and other allocations of $15 million. We also have federal grants and other of $6.3 million for total budgeted revenues of $76.9 million. So we have a projected student FTE of 5,357 at $10,000 per pupil. So the state's total foundation grant is $53,570,000 minus the 18 mils that the state assumes that we're going to collect of $10.4 million. So the state's share of our per pupil foundation allowance is $43,136,800. This is just a pie chart, just to show you how much we rely on the state for our funding. 76% of our funding comes from the state, and the next would be local revenues, so it is significant, what the state generates for us and adopts in a budget is very important to us, and we, it's important for us to see what they do going forward. Our expenditures, we are in the people business, so most of our expenditures are in salaries and benefits. We do have maybe $15 to $16 million in purchased services and other types of expenses, so our total expenditures are $79,775,296. And this chart, again, demonstrates that salary and benefits, which is the blue and red, are 79% of our expenditures. And this is typical for any school district in the state. So at the end of 2025-2026, we expect expenses to exceed revenues by $2,819,203, to take our fund equity to $15,260,814, or 19.13%. And we still need to adopt budgets for our Community Service Fund, which is, if you want to look at that last column, you can see that I have the incoming transfer from the General Fund, $500,000. We expect them to add to their fund balance slightly next year. Also, the bookstore is still sustainable for next year. And our food service fund, depending on whether universally free breakfast and lunch continues, that's what we are going to budget for right now, and that will continue to add to fund balance. We will, we will amend that as we decide on some different excess fund balance expenditures for that fund. And then our special revenue fund, which is our student activity, is also expected to be at the fund balance next year. So going forward, what we need to do is we will complete the financial audit for 2024- '25, and actually, the auditors are doing some of that work right now. We'll continue to monitor the state's budget because that's important to us, that's a big part of our equation. And then we'll look at fall enrollment and see if we are on target for fall enrollment. So we'll be making an amendment sometime late fall or early in the winter. And I did give you, I'm sorry, I did give you, this was, what I put in the packet, there was a, a little bit of a typo in, by $1,000, and did change the bottom line, but I just wanted to make sure you had that, that correction. So I'll take any questions if you have any.
So a couple of editorial comments before we offer the special public comment for the budget hearing, and then we'll close the budget hearing presentation and move into the rest of the regular meeting agenda. The, you know, the state has a constitutional requirement to approve the overall state budget by September 30th. The legislature has made a commitment to do it by June 30th, because local school boards are required to approve a budget by June 30th, and so it just seems to make sense that they would tell us how much money we're going to get, so that we can. So, you know, the past couple years, the legislature has been able to do that. Even last year, we remember, you know, into the wee hours of June 30th, they ended up passing the budget, albeit after we had our budget hearing and this June meeting. So, you know, when I look at that, they, they didn't have any work going on around the budget last week, but tomorrow they'll be back in session, and I envision, you know, three pretty long days of this week, and then a couple days at the beginning of next week, and hopefully, you know, we'll know where we stand. It's always nice when we get these three legs of our state government's budget proposals earlier than we've seen this year because we can kind of triangulate the data. So I think as Vicky kind of referenced, you know, we're working on conservative estimates. If there's some changes, you know, in regards to, for example, the 147E4, and they are going to offset some of that cost, you know, we would be in a more favorable position. Likewise, in the House's proposal, there are some categorical funds that aren't included in that superpayment that, that Mrs. Lasky talked about, and that raises some concern because those are going to affect our bottom line. So we like, we like when they put it all into the foundation grant because it just makes it easy, but in some cases, it takes a while for the lobbyists and that to sort through pages and pages of detail in these bills to really understand what's behind the scenes. So I feel pretty comfortable about what we've done based on what we know. I feel really confident in our enrollment assumption and things that we can control. So one of the good things is, from a checks and balances standpoint, the board knows this maybe for the public, is, you know, our audit for last year, we, we don't wait till the fall to do that process. We're, we're probably one of the first districts that's on the list to be audited, and so the business office takes on doing that in July, which, which, you know, in some cases might not be considered the most favorable time if people want to take vacations and those kind of things. But, so I'm really hopeful that the state's going to figure this out, and we'll know in the next week and a half. If not, we've also had years where it's gone all the way into August. We're also kind of anxiously waiting to see where some of the disagreement around some of the federal funding is going to shake out. So next year, uniquely, could be a year where maybe we have to do two budget amendments. But I think as, as Vicky has shared, you know, late fall or early in the new year, we'll definitely be able to make things right. I trust my executive director of business services a lot, and I also know she budgets very conservatively. So I think we're in a good spot.
I would also mention, too, there was some females from the state that are worth reading. I know one of them was a 30-page actor, but it spells out a lot with the proposed budget. So if you have time to take through and to read some of those details, it's informative so you know you have a better understanding of what we're facing.
So Mrs. Eichord, should we could have that unique public comment specific to the budget hearing presentation?
At this time, because this is the time of year that we do the budget hearing, we have a public comment just specific to that. So if any of you would like to come forward and make a comment or ask questions, now would be the time. 2020. And we are going to officially close the budget hearing for 2025, and we are going to move on to our present action views. Do I have a motion? So moved. Moved by Bonnick. Support by Bowman. Any questions? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will move on to our annual June approvals, and these are things that we approve each year, housekeeping items, and we did separate them out. So the first one is our membership into the Michigan High School Athletic Association for the upcoming '25-'26 school year. Still moved? Removed by Bonnick.
Support.
Support by Antoine. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Item two, the MASB, which is the Michigan Association of School Boards' membership for '25-'26 school year. Still moved?
Support.
Removed by Bonnick, support by Antoine. The only question, I had Dr. Robinson, maybe in our future workshop, we could have maybe some clarification or breakdown. I know there are benefits that we receive that may or may not exceed, you know, the cost that it is to the district because it was just shy of $10,000. It must have been long to that each year, but I know you sent out some information about it, but maybe our future workshop next month, we can have clarification on that. All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Item number three, the virtual online course provider, it's GenApp, Michigan Virtual, and Lincoln Learning for our Romeo Virtual Academy. Any motion? Motion by Bowman.
Support.
Support by Chahaki. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Item four, this is our pay for participation fees for this upcoming school year. If the public and board remembers, if it was two years ago, we voted, have the option to suspend the pay-to-play fees, and that will be approved on annual year as we are able to do so. So we are able to do that for the upcoming school year. Do I have a motion? Motion by Antoine. Support, support by Bonnick. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? And item number five, this is the stormwater management consultant review we get from our environmental. Motion? Motion by Bonnet.
Support.
Support by Boyer. Any questions? All in favor? And then we'll move on to informational updates, our communications.
So we have no, we have no communications for this evening.
And we will move on to committee reports. I will go ahead with curriculum. We have four committee reports this evening. So all of you got the notes from our last subcommittee meeting, which was June second. And at this meeting, we discussed some things that we do have four resolutions tonight pertaining to curriculum. The first thing we talked about was our math pilot. Academic services along with teachers that work together landed on bridges for mathematics, and this is for the elementary level. And this was, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are, there's two components of that, the number quarter that will be started in this upcoming school year with a full adoption of bridges tier one in the twenty six, twenty seven school year. One of the questions we just had, was there any price discounts if we approve a longer year contract, and bridges does not offer that, so this will be for next year. We talked about the middle school, they would like to use Illustrator three sixty, which is just an update to the current curriculum that they used, had some more warmth stories and support for teachers. And the building inking classrooms is part of that. And then the high school math, they don't have any decisions at this time, but they are looking for potentially a third edition to come out for their college program. And then we spent a little bit of time on the personal finance graduation requirement, so that was something that we voted on before. It is something that is required for the class of twenty twenty eight, so the current sophomores.
Incoming sophomores.
Incoming sophomores will be required to take a personal finance. We already have offered that at the high school, but it will be a requirement for those kids graduating starting in the year twenty twenty eight. So we talked about different ways that we can implement that and different credits that can cover that, and working together with our teachers at the high school level to even get creative with our economics, you know, and different classes that can cover that. And then we looked at ELA curriculum for the high school. We did approve that last year, I believe, but they are looking for some supplemental materials for some novels, and we have given a list to look over. And one of the neat things that came out of that is a couple of twelve grade English teachers thinking of ways to be creative, to encourage kids to read, especially under that capstone project, and it's just hard to motivate them. So they put together a nice list that corresponds to the different pathways that kids are in and can choose novels based on that. We looked at the update for the student parent handbook and code of conduct, which was very minimal. And then we have some resolutions ahead tonight, sixty-three A, B, and C, and resolution sixty-four are all from this curriculum, so that may be discussed over the last couple of weeks. Any questions? And then we'll move on to safety.
We had our safety subcommittee meeting on June tenth. We met Sergeant, I don't know if I'm going to say this correctly, Petricowsky, is that correct? They call him Sergeant Petry for short, of the Home County Sheriff's Office. He's the new Washington Township cell station commander. He attends our district's quarterly security meetings. He reads all shift reports so we can stay informed of the incidents in our district and our area, all three shifts. And Washington Township has been very supportive in providing the necessary resources for optimal operations. We then discussed the annual district safety focus, which is the relocation and reunification process. It's become an RHS project-based learning effort. Students from the RHS video production and drone classes are creating videos. Eventually, the hope is for all grade levels to show students what the relocation and reunification process entails specific to their school. These high school students have taken a really excited interest and ownership of this project, determining necessary personnel and resources for more effective operation of this process, so that's really good that they're involved in this. For our March meeting follow-up, we discussed the parent outreach events specifically for the fall of twenty twenty five, the digital detox event hosted by Kenny Spears from Positive You, and a wellness fair. We're going to keep them separate, possibly in September, October, and make them available to all grades and families in the district. A large portion of the meeting centered around in-school violence prevention and incident notifications. Due to the bullying incident that was brought to light at the last board meeting, which the school board had no prior knowledge of, several board members asked for all RMS administrators to attend this meeting for clarification. The board expressed the need for more timely reports and updates on serious incidents and expulsions. We discussed shield staff needing to be better informed of incidents and expulsions to improve student safety, as well as the importance of shield staff professionalism and handing confidential information to all students. The subcommittee acknowledged the need for improved communication, so administrators will start giving weekly, possibly daily briefings to the shield staff, depending on what's taking place that week. Lastly, our HeartSafe certification update. To my knowledge, all Romeo schools are now HeartSafe certified, is that correct? Our district nurse has worked diligently to make that happen, so that's really good. So that's done, and that's all I have. Any questions?
And to the finance.
Well, our finance committee met on June sixteenth, and basically, everything that Ms. Lasky covered is the meeting, is our report, unless Ms. Bowman or Mr. Boyer has any additional information.
Can't do it better than.
I know, we couldn't.
No.
Okay.
And facilities.
Facilities was also short and sweet. We had a quick meeting on Monday, the sixteenth, as well. What was the sixteen? Well, we keep it Monday. Because it's summertime, there was, Bart Melo's staff gave lots of updates as to the work that was going on in group two projects, what's happening with our outdoor athletic facility, and the need for a track storage shed. Talked about group three projects as well, which included the site work at Crosswell, my grade academy renovation, the locker rooms, fire alarm, and then the stuff that was just starting up, which includes the parking lot at Hamilton Parsons and the playground, the Hubble parking lot, Mandeville Playground, Washington Playground, RHS renovations and the drinking fountain replacements. We also just talked about a potential turf option, some consortium pricing at the Merpeale High School courtyard project, that we had some back and forth with folks along the way. And then we spent time on the change order update, one of which, which is on your board agenda tonight, that is for the R and D development that has to do with the locker room as well. And kind of went over a few things that were happening with sinking fund, and then also just an update on the elevator over at the administration building. And then also, I know I asked the question, I'm forgetting what MTT stood for, trades, may?
Multi-trades.
Multi-trades. I knew it was trade something, MTT position that we are filling. And that, about it, unless anybody has questions.
Just a couple of things in my report tonight. Mrs. McVireland's here, Mr. Murray is out of state, so we're doing a flashback when it was just Mrs. McVireland for K-12. She doesn't like to remember those days, but got a couple of things for the board tonight.
I enjoyed visiting Indian Hills today for summer skills that began today, so. Summer Skills is being hosted by Indian Hills this year because of the parking lots at Hubble being redone, and we had, let's see, six classrooms, actually, eight classrooms. And so most of the students are kids going into first grade, into second grade, into the third grade, and then we have two classrooms of English learners through a grant. We were able to lift that program up this summer. I will say, all of the teachers of summer skills are Romeo teachers. I remember when I first started, we couldn't find any Romeo teachers to teach summer school, and we had the higher subs and other certified teachers on the outside, so very pleased that they're all of our, all of our staff. Secondary credit recovery began today. That's also hosted by one of our high school teachers, Ms. Deener, so they started today. And then our academic service is still hiring. We have a middle school assistant principal vacancy, and we are back to the table for special education supervisor. Haven't found the right fit yet, so. The next slide, I will talk about our group three priorities. So were there any, Rob sent me a really lengthy email, single space, mind you, about the bridges of mathematics adoption, if anyone wanted to know any more information. Mrs. Icarus was correct. The purchase is for both number corners and the tier one instructional materials, but next year, we're just going to roll out number corners with a full adoption in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Cycle of interdependence, that is trying to continue to add to our budget, so when there are years where we don't necessarily have fund equity, that we can purchase curriculum. I remember when I first started, everything was open source because we really didn't have any money, so it would really benefit, just this math adoption for K-5 is, I think, a little over two hundred thousand dollars. You know, ELA is expensive, so, you know, we haven't even talked about science or social studies in the last few years. And then Capturing Kids' Hearts, it's to continue to support Romeo Middle School, which I don't know if we announced, they earned a Rising Star Award from Capturing Kids' Hearts, one of, I think, forty schools across the country to have received that honor. And so continue to support them and Hamilton Parsons, and we believe we have a path forward for Amanda Moore to join the Capturing Kids' Hearts team and receive training for that this year. So the money that was attached to that, that's, at most, I'm hoping we get some federal grant dollars. We used some grant dollars this year for some of the things with our contract for Capturing Kids' Hearts, so just waiting to hear about Title II from the feds. Questions about the group three priorities?
This is a good time to ask that, a question I had, the Capturing Kids' Hearts, is that an annual fee? I know it's probably a little bit more in our packet, just because I hear adding two elements on there, but would that mean?
We're only adding one elementary, he already did it. So after the first year, the real, the heavy cost is the first year of two days of implementation training. We are moving to a district license, so with three buildings, district level, we can see they give surveys to parents, students, and staff. We will be able to see those results from a district level and not just buildings, so we can aggregate with that. We did add a day for attraction visit, which means that district leadership will be able to go with one of the implementation coaches to the three buildings, which I think is important for the continuity of the program as well as sustainability. So district leadership will be able to go, and depending on the day, I'll invite, we can have a full team, we can invite board members, but we can go and see the implementation at each of the three buildings, get feedback from that implementation coach for us to continue to support the three buildings.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Any question about that? Is the goal to get all the elementary schools under this program? Is that the goal, long-term goal?
I'll take that question. No.
Okay.
No, the schools have an autonomy to choose that curriculum for themselves. We know that Indian Hills is heavily down below the leader in me, and Washington is probably four or five years in the current school communities. So it's more of schools that might be moving away for something, need a little bit more structure and formal, so, so no, I mean, we'd always entertain that. I mean, ultimately, Capturing Kids' Hearts wants a district-by-design model, but, you know, the school and the staff, you know, it needs to be right. We don't want to force anything on anyone that isn't ready for it. What is way different now for us is we have schools that are a year in and will be two years in, and so we have more internal capacity to help other staffs understand what it is and decide whether it's right for them.
That is a great question. I'm also here if there were any questions about the student parent handbook changes. I know that's not on the slide anymore, but if anybody had any questions, they were pretty minor. I think the biggest one was athletic code of conduct, that they have to be in school all day to play, which didn't think we, by the way, by the way, we had that, right? That was per Mr. Smith and Mr. Oswald's request.
It used to be active.
Yeah, huh? Yeah.
In the suite.
Active. They didn't have to be in school all day to play in a game. Thank you very much.
That's all we have for tonight.
So we are going to move on, our first public comment, I do not have any sheets pertaining to tonight's agenda. So we are going to move right into our action handles. A paper. So I'm going to begin with A, Resolution fifty-nine, that is our personnel update. We had some changes, some new hires, it's always exciting, I'm never able to do that. Reservations are being released, so do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Boyer, support by Chahaki. Any questions? The only thing I have to add, and I think I've asked Mrs. Butler this before, but if we do exit surveys or anything, it just, it does catch my eye when we have a couple assistant principals, you know, resigning, someone knowing, and there's lots of reasons why people might do that, so.
We do send out exit surveys to everybody who, you know, resigns or retires, however, I can't force them to fill it out, so I get back what I get back when we take that information and fix things.
It's a written, not face-to-face.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Can we get that report? Can we have those?
Should. Should. And that's if they choose, if they choose to turn left. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion passes. Letter B, Employee Services Resolution sixty A, we are going to table that, we made that amendment earlier. So we move on to sixty B, that was a policy update, six zero zero three, regarding firearms and other weapons communication, that will go out each fall. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Bowman.
Support.
Support by Bonnet. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on, letter B, Employee Services Resolution number sixty C, Board of Education Policy Update, this is six zero zero four, dealing with our school crisis responses to closures. So moved. Moved by Bonnet.
Support.
Support by Chahaki. Any questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Letter E, Employee Services Resolution sixty D, this is the policy update eight zero zero two, American Disabilities Act, just changing some, adding some language. So moved. Moved by Bonnet.
Support.
Support by Porter. Any questions? Just a reminder, these did go to our first reading at our last meeting, so we've had quite a bit of time to look at these. All right, moving on to Business Services Resolution number sixty-one.
Motion. Can we get a vote on that last one?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Letter E.
I know, you got a motion and support, did we get a vote? Did we get a vote?
All right, all in favor? Right, opposed? All in favor? All right, moving on to our F, Business Services Resolution Number 61, that is the 2025 final budget.
Motion.
Motion by Antoine. Support by Bowman. Any questions? All in favor? Right, opposed? Right, motion passes. Letter G, Business Services Resolution 62, that is in regards to 2026 original budgets. Moved, moved by Bonnet.
Support.
Support by Boyer. Any questions? All in favor? Right, opposed? Motion passes. Letter H, Academic Services 63A, this has to do with the district leadership priorities for K-5 math adoption, which was discussed during curriculum.
Motion.
Motion by Chahaki.
Support.
Support by Bowman. Any questions? All in favor? Right, opposed? Motion passes. Letter I, Academic Services Resolution 63B, this is district leadership priorities with the K-12 cycle of interdependence, with Ms. McFarlane explained about her report. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Bowman. Support by Antoine. Any questions? All in favor? Right, opposed? Letter G, Academic Services Resolution 63C, this is also a district leadership priority with the Capturing Kids' Heart programming for the upcoming school year. Do I have a motion? Is that Bonnet?
Yes.
Okay. You have a second?
Support.
Support by Chahaki. Any questions? All in favor? Right, opposed? All right, moving on to letter K, Academic Services Resolution 64, this is the 2025, 26 school year student parent handbook. Do I make that motion? Motion by Bonnet. Support by Bowman. Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Right, opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving on to our Facilities Resolution, that would be number 65, it's the 2021 bond change order approval that Facilities Report referenced.
Motion.
Support. Motion by Antoine. Support by Bonnet. Any questions? All in favor? Right, opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to letter M, Business Services Resolution Number 66, this has to do with the transportation fees for the upcoming school year.
So moved. Support.
Moved by, support by Antoine. Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Right, opposed? Motion passes. And Business Services Resolution 67, this is what we added and was amended at the beginning of the meeting. This is the application for disciplinary qualification to the Department of Treasury for art. Allo. Moved by Bonnet.
Support.
Support by Chahaki. We have a separate sheet, you won't see that in the packet. Any questions? So none. All in favor? Right, opposed? Motion passes. So we are going to move on at the beginning of, if you're following law and your agenda, the beginning of the meeting, we amended to the first session after our last public comment, so we are gonna move on to the A board discussion for the group of districts. Any of you has anything? So we are gonna move on to our last public comment, and I do have a few slips up here, and they all are on the same topic, which is funny, but we will keep you to three minutes. So we'll kind of give you a 10-second warning if needed, but the first one up is Ryan Nickel.
Actually, I'll go last, Sam.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm gonna do, I'll go last there. All right, is it Taali Schmidt? Okay, how did I say your first name there? Yep, go right or left to the microphone. Could you repeat your name? I'm sorry, I think I mispronounced it.
No, you said right, Taali.
Okay, all right.
So I have a question regarding the parking lot situation with the seniors, and I wanted to ask if you, the board, consider any other alternatives to just staying in tradition or doing the wrong thing? Was anything else to replace the tradition discussed?
So we don't answer questions directly, but if you want to follow up to that question, we can definitely reach out to you.
Okay. So to the whole board, I wanted to ask, how big was the risk of being fined by the government due to the debris found in the waterways?
I will go ahead and write all your questions on the back of your form, and we can reach out to you after.
Okay. And the last question was, why did it take so long to communicate the whole student body about the issue since the, since the, you guys got notified about it in September? I think so. And we only really got anything back from you in April.
Can you repeat your second question?
How big was the risk of being fined by the government due to the debris in the waterways? That was all, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, next, Maxwell Alter.
Yeah, same thing as him, just a couple of questions regarding the parking lot. So I've got here just, was there any attempt to communicate the problem with the parking lot regarding the paint in the waterways before the decision was made to remove the tradition? And then I've also got here, why was construction on the parking lot moving so quickly as opposed to other projects such as the basketball court and basketball court and like the baseball dimes at high school?
Can you restate that? The last one?
The last one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Construction of the parking lot, why was it moving so much quicker as opposed to projects like the basketball court and high school and baseball dimes? And that was all.
Thank you. All right, Julian Hill.
So I'll recommend us to kind of rephrase these instead of questions as, as we all kind of part of the same group, but I just wanted to ask some similar questions and also some other things. So I have a couple of questions I'll ask, and I'll switch more to concerns. One question I had was, were there multiple water tests done at different points in time? And so, whether these tests have taken place? And also, was there any sort of outlier, or was it sort of an increasing trend as, as the tests continued? And another one we had, I guess, coming to this meeting now, we kind of learned it's more of an annual thing, but just to confirm, what was the reason for the water test being taken in September? And if so, was it something that was mandated by the government, or was it something that And then one final question before I move on. If someone were to prevent a viable solution going forward, would there be any sort of consideration to possibly change or improve the tradition, or possibly to reinstate the original tradition with some sort of way to mitigate the effects of the water damage? So one final thing I'll add, I originally had this as a question, but I'll sort of rephrase it. I think a lot of students right now are kind of concerned at the lack of communication from the board, although the meetings themselves are public, really nobody at the high school level is inclined to attend the meetings or to view the meetings at all anyway. So we would just ask that there would be a little bit more of an inclination to let the students know what's going on with the meetings, especially, it's something that could be implemented at the high school itself by, say, through the video announcements or something like that, where students can let the whole student body know what sort of things are on the agenda, what sort of decisions would be made, just to make sure that students are informed of the decisions, especially ones such as the tradition of parking lot, that would really have a great effect on them. So that's all I have for you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ryan, I have a second, Nicole, and then Ryan, you'll be last.
Thank you guys for having me. I do have some notes. So the problem, what I found is that the school board wants to stop the senior tradition of gaining parking spots because of environmentally unsafe, and it's also due to students trying inappropriate stuff, I don't know, I guess, from what the library represents. So the solution that they stated was that they wanted to get a rock, like the rock, I am a little nervous. What they wanted was a rock, like the library. So the only problem to this is that there is not enough time in the school year to paint the rock. Like, for one student to paint it once, you would have to paint it twice every day for every senior student to paint the rock, because of how many students there are due to how many school days. And it also depends on if a rock ever shows up too, because that's what Mr. Osborne's email said, was that he was also looking for something to donate a rock. In machines to set and move the rock to the area. So what I recommend is that, I did do some research on environmentally safe paint that you can find at home depot, and you could limit the student body to buying that type of paint, that they don't like paint that flakes off and goes into the storm. And then there's also, you can also do like sign of geniuses, like NHS does, I know the robotics team also does sign of geniuses, because you're also looking for parents to help and monitor the painting of parking spots due to inappropriate designs. And then I also suggested, like in Mr. Osborne's email, is that you know the student body and approve designs, sorry, I, approve designs that students had, so that they would also build it, and also limit that. That's about all I have, but.
Thank you. Thank you. Ryan and Nicole, both others up here?
Good evening. I, so you've, you've worked for the students, really. I just came here for some moral support, for my son and for the rest of the student body who came here. I think it's encouraging to see the level of engagement on this, and I hope that that, just them being here kind of starts to speak volumes about how important this is to a large parking body. As, as I kind of pushed Isaac to me presented, right, we think that there are other alternatives to just killing a tradition that has been going on, and many students have looked at for many years and kind of looked forward to that then got kind of yanked out from under the, you know, the summer before their senior year started. And it's, the, the response was good night, a dollar, that's, that's a year younger, should be one of the junior class. The response was kind of overwhelming, and so I would just implore the board to look at the alternatives, because I think there are many options that we can go here, of which have been laid out this evening, as opposed to just cutting this tradition as a whole. You know, the rock has come up, and logistics of the rock, and you know, 400 student body, you kind of lose that opportunity that every student has to kind of make their mark, right? A lot of high school and everything gets kind of washed into obscurity, and this is one of the few things that each student gets to touch, gets to put their own mark on, and gets to stand by day after day throughout their senior year. You know, going to a rock kind of blends that out into a general consensus of what the class is, and you tend to lose the quieter voices who don't always get the opportunity to express themselves kind of in this way, right? They get swallowed in the mob that becomes high school. We've all been there, some of us more recently than others, but I would just ask, you kind of look back at the time, look at these students here who are out to kind of support this opportunity for themselves, and I would just challenge the boards to see if there are alternatives. And I think there's a community outreach out there that would be willing to come, supervise, support, clean up, you know, do the things necessary to help avoid the problems that the school district is facing. Thank you for your time.
I know normally we don't answer questions directly. I did record all of these questions, but it's, I think it's pretty relevant, and it's an easy question to answer. The board actually found out about that decision after all of you did. It is not a decision that the board made, that's not something that we are involved in, so please know that. I'm not saying that to throw anyone under the bus, but I think sometimes there's a misconception that the board is involved in every little detail of work building operations, and we are not. Just a quick story, I was approached last fall by someone who said, how could you, how could the board cancel homecoming floats? And I'm like, I didn't even know that that was canceled. So just know that there are, you know, things that take place at the building level, and we trust our administrators to make those decisions, but I do appreciate all of you coming respectfully and sharing your thoughts, and we will reach out, you know, in the next week or so to try to answer these questions that you can help with a little bit better.
Mrs. Icarus, could I just add? So we don't always get students here, so I just think it's really important, teachable moment as well, that you're kind of seeing a, a body of government. And the reason we don't engage one-on-one is because if it's not something we voted on, we can't speak as a board. So Ms. Icarus could say, yeah, we should do whatever kind of paint, and I could say, oh, we should do a rock, you know, we would be giving you misinformation because it's not something that we've actually had action on, so that's why we don't do it as a board. Now, you'll get a phone call and there could be communication, and then stuff could come back, and then we would be able to have our like individual opinions, but because it isn't something that, you know, we've discussed as a board, it wouldn't be something that we could respond. So I hate looking at students and not being able to at least let you know the why, still doesn't make you feel any better, you took a Monday out of your time, although air-conditioned buildings are probably a little better to be outside, but I just want you to know that because it pains all of us to not, you know, give you our opinions back, but it wouldn't be right because we act as a board. So even if it was denied or agreed, whatever, it comes to that decision. So that's the why, at least.
We need the details, we'll look into it for you, one of us or several of us will get back to you, and we heard you.
But I want a second. Great job. I mean, it's, it's very cool to see the board, you getting involved politically, come in, talk, a little nervous, whatever, you guys did a great job. I, I love that, I hope you get a lot more students doing that, because you guys did a very good job. I know I asked the questions, which sorry, we couldn't answer, and you know, covered that for you, but good job, guys. Could I, I know this is out of decorum, but is this something that the board can weigh in on?
It, it is not ultimately our decision, but we can take this and share it. Share the concern. I wanted to encourage you guys to come up with something. I mean, the passion that you guys are showing right here, like standing up there at this kind of stuffy meeting and talking to us, that's, that's, I mean, that's kind of incredible. Come up with something.
Share the information you've got.
Do some research, come up with a proposal, get some signatures. Come up with something. It might not, it might not happen, all right? But why not? You've come this far, right? Maybe, maybe there's something out there that, that you guys can think of that's not necessarily painting parking spots, but that is sort of relevant to, you know, congruency, you know? So I challenge you to dazzle us. But to answer your question, no, it is not something that, that the board, please, I'm, but thank you.
Good.
Any other comments? And I have a motion to adjourn this meeting and go into closed session. Support. Motion by Bowman, support by Chahaki. Do you have a call to go to the next round?
Yes.
Ms. Boyer?
Yes.
Ms. Chahaki?
Yes.
Ms. Icarus? Oh, Ms. Boyer? Could you read the motion?